Entertained a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Barrett, any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a 5-0 vote. If the clerk would read the revisions, please.
To the policy agenda, we're adding resolution appointing Dwight Johnson, Ward Four representative to the Biloxi Civil Service Commission.
Is there a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Moved.
By Mr. Lawrence, is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Barrett, thank you. And all in favor? Thank you. That's approved on a 5-0 vote. That brings us to the mayor's report.
I don't think I have a report, but it, we've gone through some, I guess, some challenges since the beginning of the fiscal year, and we still continue to shake some things out. And unless Mike has some comments?
Mike, just for a second. Speaking of challenges, we're investigating a drainage issue on Atkinson Road that's in Ward Three. We're investigating drainage problems at two residences at Woodland Park Drive. That's in Ward Three. We're investigating and vacuuming, cleaning the drain boxes and the pipes adjacent to the Carol Lee Circle area. We're repairing, that's in Ward Four, we're repairing scheduled repairs to Palafox Ditch. One residence where the ditch is caving in. We've begun the Tara Drainage Project on Tara Lane today. In Ward Six on Campbell Drive, our insurance adjuster is working with the residents that had the sewage backup. And there's also a project on Campbell Drive in Ward Six where we're repiping a ditch that's not satisfactory for the water. We're doing an investigation of a sinkhole in Hampton Lane.
Where is that in Ward Six? What drive?
Campbell.
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 Alright.
That's just a partial list. I just wanted to let you realize we're, we are chasing our tails right now with drainage issues around, all around the city. And an update on hiring, a week ago, we had 74 vacancies. We still have 74 vacancies.
And that concludes the report. No shared any questions?
Well, I don't know if I mentioned, it's a beautiful day outside today.
It is.
Okay, no, I know we had that heavy rain last week, and that's created some issues. So appreciate that report. We don't have any departmental reports. That brings us to the council report. Mr. Lawrence, anything?
I really have no report. The only thing I'd like to do, I'd like to close this meeting. And I'm my son-in-law, Dennis Meins, who passed away earlier today. So, and I'm him, we actually work for Public Works, City Biloxi, and probably fisticuffs term in City Biloxi I've had, because he's an avid fisherman. So, and I'm him, I'd just like to close the meeting.
And what is his name, George?
Say it.
What is his name?
Dennis Meins. M-E-I-N-S.
M-E-I-N-S, okay. Alright, Mr. Demming, anything?
Couple things. First, I was on the phone earlier today with a former resident of yours, and she told me to thank you for finally getting the Circle Park tennis courts fixed eight years later. She's a soft haver, just a joke. She really did appreciate it. She just wanted me to tell you thank you.
Well, thank you, Robbie.
Mike, do we have an update on the concrete? The schedule for the bluffs?
There's no change since last week. We just chasing our tail. We haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah, I didn't know if we had a...
Have it marked. We need, we need help from the county to do it.
Do we have, do we get the, did they sign off on helping us? Are we just waiting? My question is, we're just still waiting for scheduling, right?
Correct.
Okay, so we haven't gotten it, we haven't got it scheduled after all this other stuff we're doing? And you said you, I know you guys went out there and walked the Carol Lee Circle, Baywood area?
Carol Lee Circle is a real interesting problem. There is no drainage in Carol Lee Circle. All the, the way it's designed, it's all supposed to run out to Baywood. I think I'm saying that right, to Baywood. So we started by making sure that the Baywood drainage is working functionally by getting a vacuum truck out there, and I think it's there today, vacuuming the trucks, the drain boxes, and make sure that they're open and clean. And then, then if, if that's still not satisfactory, we're going to have to figure out how to, how to add drainage to that neighborhood. There's not one single drain box in the neighbor, in the circle.
Right, well, it's, the circle is actually like a horseshoe. And it comes down to the, the boxes on Baywood as it wraps around. Now, I was out there, and I have videos from all the rain. And you can just see the water come from the Stonebridge Development, just flooding through the neighbors. I mean, you can see streams and rivers just cutting paths through the yards. I think we might want to look at some way to either put some, a ravine, or some, dredge something that will help guide the water down the back alleyway. Now, there's some people in there that Jerry may want to send some of his people out there, but someone's built a fence and a pool in, I think is the easement portion, the 10-foot gap that's in between the two property, or supposed to be available between the two property lines. So if, just, we need to have someone run out there. Now, we dealt with that on the other side of Carol Lee, Jerry. I know we talked about that over by the Shipley's, and we had the guy build that fence divider and made that whole easement part of his backyard, and we had to make him take it down. On the other side of Carol Lee, I think they've done the same thing. So we need to go out there and make sure that, that the brush and the, and the fences aren't built all the way to the ground. A lot of those houses built those fences without putting that two-inch gap so water can flow, so it actually block, create some type of blockage. If we can go out there and make sure that everybody's up to code and allows that water to be released and flow easily, that may really give us some relief on a... Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Demming. Mr. Glavine?
Just a couple of short things to kind of keep on your radar. Kimbrough, that area, I continue to get a few phone calls on, we still haven't been able to deter the speeders that kind of whipped through that neighborhood. So if we can just kind of keep that on the radar, it's almost every week, or every three or four days, I get a phone call, kind of reporting it. My suggestion was that they make sure that they report anything, any vehicles they can identify. If they can report those, that would be helpful for law enforcement. But it seems that that's kind of one of the neighborhoods that I continuously get, get some phone calls from. The other issue, there was a resident, I believe it was over around the Ellington area, that they had an issue with the, I guess their road, or I'm sorry, their land eroding. And we went out there, and we thought it was one of the old pipes, and I think we may have even replaced it, but then it reoccurred and started sinking some more. I don't know if we have an update on that, Mike, or if that's still just on the radar with the deluge of stuff that you're dealing with.
Let me get with you afterwards. I need to know the address.
Okay, I'll pull it up.
I remember there was somebody, we, that we went out and looked, and it was like only one small little area. The rest of the street was pretty good. I'm not sure if that's the same house.
Yeah, I'll get with you. I'll get with you on the address. It's the one that, I think it's the one you're referencing, but I'll get the exact address after this meeting.
Just FYI, Camp Four Jacks will, should be paved tomorrow.
Awesome.
We've been waiting for Warren paving. You all have approved that the new contract at the last meeting, or maybe it's today we're doing it, where, anyway, we've got a new contract, and they're ready to roll. And they're starting with Camp Four Jacks, and they said they would try and do it starting tomorrow.
Well, the good news is they're going to get a nice new surface. I guess the bad news is that now they can, they don't have to tap on their brakes, so we may have to start policing that area for speeding too soon, but...
But FYI, the homeowners association has voted in, to remove the speed table in Taylor Oaks.
Okay. Alright. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett.
Just a couple of things. I know you said that we still had the 74 vacancies. Have we been able to hire anyone at Public Works yet, or is...
And they're going through background checks.
Okay.
But I asked just before the meeting started, and the number is still 74, so...
Okay. And I know that we have a long list of things, but I want to add something to that list. Off of Oaklawn Road, there's an area, it's, I guess, called Plumberville. It's like Pinecrest, Evelyn, Dixie, Stella, Virginia, that area. The ditches in there, the grass, it's, it's in really bad shape. And I've gotten calls, several of them, over the last couple of weeks, and it's dried out now. And before, it was too wet, and nothing could be done. But while it's dry, if we could get some attention paid to that, so that it's a real wet area, so before we start getting heavy rains again, it doesn't get back to, back to that. And then...
I was going to add that on your agenda today is approval of the new boom mower that they've been asking for, which is going to help their productivity, I think, a great deal.
Correct, yes. Also, I know that we can't do all of Shorecrest, because it's in the plans to do water and sewer, and we would just have to go and tear up the road. But there's a section of the road just north of the bridge and the sewer plant that has gotten really, really bad. If there's anything, like, even if we could go in and do like what we did on Old Woolmarket, and cut a couple of sections of that out, and put some in just until we get that water sewer project done, it's a really heavy traffic road, and it's just getting worse and worse. And then also, we had, we've had several people request some trees to be cut down at the end of Boyett and Shorecrest, blocking. And I talked to Mr. Krill, and he got with Mr. Nolan, and they're past what's required or whatever to, to cut them down. But there's a lot of bushes right there, too, that, that impedes the, your vision for oncoming traffic. So if we could just even get those bushes cleaned out, not necessarily the trees, but just those bushes that are right along the road...
I don't think any of those trees are protected, those ones that...
Yeah, but the bushes, yeah.
You can't see around that corner, people coming in.
Yeah, so if we could even just get those bushes cleaned out, maybe not the trees, that would help somewhat to where, because you can't see anything, and then you've got cars. That area, Shorecrest, you know, you, it's a 35-speed limit, I believe, but, you know, people doing more like 55. And, you know, it's just a matter of time before we, we have a bad wreck right there, because you can't see that traffic that's coming north. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. And I have no report. That brings us to the public agenda and citizens' comments. We'll permit three minutes for anyone, or make available three minutes for any speaker who wishes to address the council, or the administration for that matter, at this time. And we'll set aside up to 45 minutes cumulatively. When you are recognized, please come up to the table where Mr. Ramsey is now and sign in, as Mr. Ramsey is doing at this moment. And then Mr. Ramsey will soon speak his name clearly, so the clerk can record that. And then when Mr. Ramsey is done, we'll see if there's anybody else who wishes to address
Gilbert Ramsey, military veterans outreach specialist. I come to you today to, I left you some literature on your, top of your tables here, to introduce MDEQ Summit coming up November the 9th. And they have a deadline, October the 29th, to introduce more projects. So I'm having this opportunity to introduce you to a public-private partnership opportunity with the state. We'd like to introduce an L3C Corporation. L3C Corporation Louisiana recognizes. And that is a 501(c)(3) when LLC incorporated appropriately. So and also, we're coming through, through you with Blue Economy Quality of Life. You recognize we have 12 casinos on Mississippi Gulf Coast. How many amenities for loved ones and caretakers? Ask yourself that. So, next question. What opportunities are for them to enjoy Blue Economy Quality of Life? University of Southern Mississippi is looking at this for the marine technology Gulfport Harbor. We're looking at this for all end-of-waterway activities, and we're also looking at outreach for, to incorporate within all the national parks within Jackson County. We're going to call it Coastal One Initiative. I have this opportunity to recognize this appropriately with y'all, ladies and gentlemen. I've come to this standpoint because tomorrow is a Veterans Health Administration innovation thing I also left information about. You can go and cite Intensive for Commercialization Opportunities, innovative ideas. This all has to compel us to entertain the children for STEM programs. We have this opportunity. Look at these packages I left for y'all, and incorporate with your students any outreach capability you have. It is tomorrow, is virtual for two days in State of Washington DC. And it's an opportunity for students to have a higher learned education. I'm staying in State of Mississippi. I have an opportunity to go international, but I'm not doing that. My mother's buried at the National Cemetery. My father's buried at Irish Hill. And my great-grandpa, my backyard is 500,000 acres. The Southern National Forest is my backyard. I have this for y'all. I'm coming out of the woods to incorporate this with y'all's passion and initiative. The Inspire Magazine, the VA Hospital offered me to do a story at the VA Hospital, and that incorporates all VA Hospitals in Texas to Florida. Ms. Mary Nelson, Community Services Director, she has this opportunity to offer this to me, to make sure that we have this vision. Please, represent us appropriately. We are the hospitality state. We are not looking at what Mr. burning any longer. Thank you for your assistance and outreach. Have a blessed day and be safe.
Thank you, Mr. Ramsey. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council? On my left, your right, anybody on that side who would like to address the council? Anybody on my right, your left, that would like to address the council? Ms. Smith, did you want to speak or communicate with the council? Okay, thank you. Anybody in the back? Did you want to come up and talk or no? Okay, I'll meet you after. Okay, thank you. Alright, I'll meet Ms. Smith after this meeting. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Alright, that concludes the citizens' comments. That brings us to the policy agenda. If the clerk would read item A, the ordinance, please.
Ordinance to rescind, ordinance number 2457, amending portions of Chapter Eight for the Flood Damage and Prevention Ordinance.
Who made the motion on that, please?
Lawrence and Gines.
Lawrence and Gines. Alright, the motion was made by Mr. Lawrence during the first reading, the second by Mr. Gines. Mr. Lawrence, any comments or questions?
Yes, sir. What happened when we were, when we were putting the ordinance together to adopt the additional one-foot-a-free board? We used an outdated template to put that together, and I should have caught it. I was looking at the sheets that were put in front of me, you know, just to make sure that we had added the extra foot of free board. And so essentially, what happened is that we adopted the older ordinance rather than updating the newer ordinance. So what we're doing now is rescinding, rescinding that ordinance that was passed the last time with the additional foot of free board. This will get us back to the right ordinance, the one that we should be under, and at some date in the future, we may come back to you with the additional one-foot-a-free board. This actually, actually, the good side of this is, if there is a good side, is that we have a couple of major projects that haven't been announced yet that had already designed to the one-foot free board. And this would have created a, a major problem for those. And so what, what we'll do, let's get back to the, the right ordinance, the one with the one-foot-a-free board, the most current that we're supposed to be under. And then at some point, at the mayor's recommendation, we'll, we may come back with that extra one-foot-a-free board.
Jerry, let me jump ahead. And like I said, we, there are a lot of things that, you know, if we were just arbitral, they throw that other foot, and some things may be complicated in DC and other places. It really, it's, it's right for us to be very, very cautious in this situation. So I think it's the right thing to do, is to hold off on throwing that extra foot on, you know, just as a suggestion. And we don't, we, there's a lot of things pending that this could impact, as well as some of the things that we've talked about at the businessmen's club, about the flood insurance and some of these things could make a big, big difference to our development opportunity. So I think it's the right thing to do, and when it's time, and weighing the consequences of doing or not doing it, we'll move forward with that.
Okay. I'll listen, sorry. I'll let George, and then I'll get to Felix, and I'll get to...
I was out of turn.
Go ahead, Mr., go ahead. No, go ahead, Mr. Lawrence. I didn't know if you had any more questions.
Speak up.
Alright, Mr. Gines, go ahead.
No, I, I agree with him, and I think that's, when we were talking the last time when we passed it, I think it was a real close 4-3 vote, and I think that's what we were trying to get across. So I believe this is the best thing to do. So, I agree with it.
At this point, at this point, we don't have any documentation that would prove that we would be gaining anything by the extra foot of free board in the future...
Or avoiding the consequence, too, if we, if there's a consequence of doing or not doing it.
And in the future, if the mayor does suggest that we take another look at this, then hopefully, we would have some documentation showing how people's flood insurance may have increased, their premiums may have increased, that we can bring back along with that argument. So we'll, we'll wait to that point.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Krill.
Alright, Mr. Demming?
My question was about the consequences, so you answered that.
Any other questions or comments from the council? There being none, I'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance is presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. If the clerk would read the next item, again, a second reading, item B.
Ordinance amending Section 596, basis for determining dwelling to be unfit.
The motion was by...
Lawrence and Gines.
Lawrence and Gines, thank you. Mr. Lawrence, any questions or comments?
Same thing on this one, Jerry. Can explain exactly what we're doing with it now.
The only thing that we did on this is that when we adopted the, when the council adopted the International Property Maintenance Code, Mr. Demming pointed out that there was the word "moral" in there, which had been in there for years. And actually, the new standard language is "health, safety, and welfare." So we changed the word from "morals" to "and welfare." And so this, this language is now in line with what it should be. That's all.
That's your city council of Biloxi in action. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Gines?
No comment, thank you.
Any other questions, or have we, is there more action from the council here in Biloxi?
Does that mean he has morals, or he don't have morals, you know?
He doesn't want to go on record as being one of the immoral councilmen.
Alright, let's not get carried away. Were there any questions of substance on this item?
I think I'm the one that takes the heat on this. I'm the one that said we need to remove all the morals from the, from the standards.
Alright, so we're ready to move forward, and we'll call for the question. All in favor of the ordinance is presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to item C, a resolution. If the clerk would read that resolution, please.
Resolution appointing Harriet Michelle Mitchell to the Biloxi Civil Service Commission.
I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Gines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Gines, any comments?
Yeah, I think this is going to be a great appointment, and I think I just left Ms. Mitchell earlier, and she left her award for Dynamic Group of the Year. She's going to be an excellent candidate. So if you don't mind coming up and accepting this award prior to your vote.
Yeah, this is for the Boys and Girls Club. They are a dynamic group, and they are Dynamic Group of the Year. It's a sideline in the Smart Rock Club. She's their representative. Wanted to present this to the city and the...
Alright, and anything else, Mr. Gines? Mr. Barrett?
Sir?
Any other comments or questions from the council? All in favor of the resolution is presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Ms. Mitchell, while you're here, is there anything you'd like to say? If, if you, if you'd like to speak, you have to come up to the mic, but you're not obligated to, but, and congratulations, by the way.
Yes, again, my name is Harriet Mitchell. I am a native of Biloxi. I was a civil service employee for 25 years, and I appreciate and thank you for the appointment.
Great, congratulations. Welcome to the team.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Alright, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. This was a late addition, item D. If the clerk would read that item, please.
Resolution appointing Dwight Johnson, Ward Four representative to the Biloxi Civil Service Commission.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
By Mr. Demming, is there a second?
I'll second.
By Mr. Barrett, thank you, Mr. Barrett. Any comments or questions? Mr. Demming?
Just want to tell the chief and the deputy chief, they came through. I've had a tough time finding a representative from Ward Four to sit on the board. It's a, it's a thankless job. And a couple applicants are potential, appointments that I asked, I asked them if they would do it, and they said, "Well, I'm busy that day." And I said, "If we," I didn't even tell you what day you meet. And so, so Jason Davis called me, and he said, "Mr. Johnson would, would like to sit on it." And I called him, and great guy, and I think he's going to be great for the, for the, for the board, but if we could send him an outline of the things, of the duties that, that would be required of him, I would love to do that after the meeting, after he's already nominated and confirmed. I'm just kidding, he's going to be great at it. I informed him what the basic duties are, but he does want something in writing, something, he wants a, a book to make sure he's up to speed on whatever he's going to be tasked with.
Mr. Barrett? Any other questions or comments? The only question I have is, I don't know Mr. Johnson. Can somebody give me just a thumbnail sketch of who he is?
He's a former FBI, so that should say enough.
If you've been naughty, he'll come get you.
I'm never naughty. I followed the morals clause that we just removed. Okay, thank you. Good enough for me. Call for the question. All in favor of the resolution is presented? It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
By Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Gines, a dynamic duo. Alright, Mr. Lawrence, questions on particular items?
Yeah, I want to follow up on a question Q. Why do we use economic development in this particular, borrowing money from there? For some reason, we borrowed it from, only from economic development?
That's one, you're using this as a clearing fund. You're not, you're aware of the things we're trying to do with economic development in order to get the, the things cleaned, you know, and before, you know, basically, it's, we're going to, as we're getting reimbursed both from the Coastal Mississippi Board of Supervisors, and we've already put up 197, I think, and actually paid for that. This is the remaining of, this is part of the remaining $510,000 that's on the agenda to finish the job that we started before cruising, to finish clearing and cleaning and pruning, beautification. The, basically, that 510 that's on the agenda today, between NGK and Agar Corp, is going to be paid, you know, three sources, as I said, coastal, Board of Supervisors, and 110 made up of a few people that we'll let you know about. That 110 is, is intended to be paid back. This is a clearing fund for that project.
I made a call just a few minutes ago to Diana Thornton, our excellent accounting director, and I said, "If I was a councilman today, what would I ask about all those Economic Development Security Fund resolutions?" And I think I would ask, "What's the balance today, and what will it be tomorrow if I approve all these resolutions?" And Diana's answer is, "4.2 million today, 4.2 million tomorrow."
Right. So it's, again, as, as we're reimbursed from these projects, we're not going to spend it. This is a budget entry. We're going to spend 510,000, and this is where the source will be coming. We didn't spend anything yet. We will, the cash will go out, and the cash comes in for the, the revenue part of the deal, it'll, it'll flush it, in and out. 4.2 million fund balance, 4.2 fund balance after the business is cleared, if we're successful in getting the last 110,000.
It's a good deal.
It is a good deal. It is a good deal.
It's a good one.
Your council in action, right there, we appreciate that.
In action again, Daddy. The moral council.
Moral. A moral, a moral, a moral, whatever.
And the other one on S, on, this engineering company you hired, Mike?
Did you say?
You have certain projects for them?
S is in Sam?
S is, S is in Sierra?
Howard. The Howard consultant.
Right, Howard, that's, that's the consultant that is our second. We have two professional engineers, registered professional engineers in the engineering department today. One is permanent, the other is a consultant. That's the consultant fee.
So I mean, you have certain products you put this man on, that you plan on doing? It says it's going on to you, so I figure you handling it.
That, that resolution extends her, the consultant, till April.
And I said, "Somebody, do you have projects they're working on?" That's what I was asking you.
Mm-hmm.
I knew you extended, I said, "Do you have projects that they're working on now?"
Absolutely. I could, I'd be happy to show you a list of almost three dozen projects and who they're assigned to, each, each one of the engineers.
So we're getting our money to work?
I hope so. I certainly think so. Maybe the outcome is the actual projects themselves, we'll see how they roll out.
Yeah, well, you're always getting on us about, "We voted for everything." Well, this one's on you. The doggone, it goes that way this time, it's on you. So I hope it works out fine. Thank you. That's it, for me.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Gines, any questions about the consent agenda, any? All right. Ms. Newman, Mr. Demming, Mr. Glavine.
I'm good.
Mr. Barrett?
Nothing.
And I'm good as well. All right, we'll call for the question on the consent agenda. All in favor of the agenda is presented.
Action.
It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Are there any exceptions that you would like noted? There being none, we will move on to the code enforcement hearings. Mr. Krill.
Is there anyone here to speak on this matter, 240 Benaki Avenue, Raquel L. Greathouse?
There being no one, this hearing is closed. That brings us to the next hearing, Cheryl McEwen.
Cheryl McEwen, 181.
181 Gardena Street, yes.
That's still in violation.
Is there here, is there anyone here who wish to speak on this matter, 181 Gardena Street? Or Ms. Cheryl McEwen? There being no one, this hearing is closed. That brings us to hearing C, Mr. Krill.
Cynthia White, 257 Graham Avenue, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on this matter, 257 Graham Avenue? Cynthia White, anyone here to speak on this matter? There being no one, this hearing is closed. Hearing D, Mr. Krill.
State of Mississippi, 321 Benaki Avenue, this property has been purchased from the state of Mississippi, it has a new owner, so we're going to have to go back and start over with this one with the new owner.
All right, no one is here to speak on 321 Benaki Avenue? This hearing is closed. It brings us to hearing E, Mr. Krill.
Eileen M. Wells, Zero Brady Drive, this property is still in violation.
Is there anyone here to speak on this Brady Drive matter? Eileen, Eileen M. Wells? There being no one, this hearing is closed. Thank you, Mr. Krill. That brings us to the routine agenda, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by Mr. Barrett?
Second.
And a second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Barrett, any questions?
No, I will give George my time.
You're going to defer to Mr. Lawrence, okay? Mr. Lawrence?
Walk you back. Give us some good news and all these updates.
So, within the past few weeks, of course, we received over 1.99 million, and we had that additional 1.28 million I mentioned at the last council, in step four or five. So in about 15 days or less, we should have it in our accounts.
Everything rolling good?
Yes, sir.
We staying on top of it?
Trying to.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions related to the routine agenda? Comments by the council? There being none, all in favor of the routine agenda is presented. It's approved on a 7-0 vote, thank you. Is there a motion to adjourn in memory of Dennis Mines? I believe the motion was made by Mr. Lawrence.
Right.
And is there a second? I believe all the council will second that, Mr. Lawrence. All in favor of adjournment? All opposed? All right, thank you. It's approved on a 7-0 vote. Thank you all for attending today. Ms. Smith, Azure Smith?